Good evening. I'd like to, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like the council members, city officials, and our home audience, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 24th City Council meeting. We do have nine items on our agenda this evening. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Paulson, please continue with the roll call of members.
Tatman, here.
Kroll.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Kearney.
Here.
Heinz.
Here.
Florina.
Here.
Does anybody want to have an excuse for Ms. Neal this evening?
So who?
Mr. Florina, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call to excuse Ms. Neal this evening.
Tatman.
Yes.
Kroll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Here.
Does anybody want to have an excuse for Ms. Neal this evening?
So who?
Mr. Florina, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call to excuse Ms. Neal this evening.
Tatman.
Yes.
Kroll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And we have accepted the minutes. At this time, we have reports from our committees. And this is anything current or anything actually older things, if you'd like to bring your assignments up. Who'd like to go first? This is Patrick.
Thank you, President Arnold. Utilities and Transit Committee has got three items on tonight's agenda. The first one for transit is item number six, and it's the first reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application with ODOT for grants for funds from the Ohio Rural Transportation Grant Program and to accept and execute the grant agreement. We are applying for a little over $8.2 million at this point. This grant goes towards purchase of four new buses, and it will pay for 80 percent of that cost. It also goes towards the cost of operating the transit system. The application deadline is October 12th, and at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule. For utilities, there are two items. Item number seven is the first reading of ordinance extending employment of the two seasonal employees within the Utilities Department. This ordinance will extend their employment up to an additional 15 weeks. We purchased 1,500 radio read meters at the beginning of this year, and these employees have installed 700. There are approximately 2,300 manual read meters left in the city, and by granting this extension, we're hoping that the remaining 800 that were purchased for this year will be installed, and that will leave us with approximately 1,500 to do next year and finish that program.
Good deal.
This is only the 11th year of doing this. And the last item is item number eight, and it's an ordinance appropriating $184,105.52 for the purpose of making payroll, fringe, and pension for the remainder of 2018 within the Sewer Department. This money is needed because there were two retirements this year, along with two open positions being filled that were not budgeted for, and an additional health insurance cost to the city of over $41,000. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule so that the payroll can be met, and I will defer any other explanation to the auditor. And that concludes my report on the stuff on this agenda. However, we did have a transit meeting before council tonight, and there was two assignments, assignment number 18-092, and that was to create a new operations manager position for the Transit Department. And the second one was 18-093, and that is legislation to appropriate monies to fund that position. And both of these are moving forward, and hopefully they will be on our next agenda. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Do you have a question, though? I noted that down that you're going to waive six and eight, also seven, too?
Yes, seventeen.
Okay. Thank you. And then next, Ms. Fairchild.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Human Resources Committee has one item on the agenda tonight. It's number two, the first reading, to extend the temporary employment of one seasonal employee within the administration, four seasonal employees within the Service Department, and one seasonal employee within the Engineering Department, and four seasonal employees within the Parks and Rec Department. This agenda item has no additional appropriation attached to it, and will allow those temporary seasonal employees to finish their jobs for the summer, and allow the City Service Director and the Parks and Rec Director to use them throughout the rest of the year to the last payroll in 2018. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Are you going to waive that decision?
And I will. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else with reports? Mr. Paulson?
Tatman. You had to hand it first. Go ahead.
Mr. Kroll?
I've just got a lot of them. The Finance Committee has three items on tonight's agenda. Item number three, which is at first reading, which is to authorize the tax levies for the City of Chillicothe, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, as determined by the Ross County Budget Commission, clarifying said levies with the city, certifying said levies with the city. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule on item number three. Item number four, and this is actually with the Technology Committee, but it is to appropriate $6,415 for email hosting services expenses for various city departments. And so that we can get this underway and the bill's paid, I will ask at the appropriate time that we please waive the three-read rule. Item number five, which is also at first reading for the Finance Committee, is appropriating $265,300 for additional fuel costs within various departments, and this should take us to the end of the year. So at the appropriate time, so that we can keep all of our vehicles moving, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule. Final item on tonight's agenda from the Finance Department is item number nine, which is to approve and amend replacement pages to the Chillicothe certified ordinances. This was a numerical inaccuracy, and the law director asked that we fix that. And so at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Mr. Tatman, you're next.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Engineering Committee has one item on tonight and is up for the second reading. But if everybody looked at it, there is probably a change in the legislation. It's not going to affect the timing. It's still going to go three reads, still going to have a public hearing. But it was inadvertent to put declaring an emergency on the tail end of this request. So we're going to, I'm going to request to amend by substitution.
Okay. I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Florina. Request to amend by substitution. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Kroll.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And we have amended it?
Now, this has to do with the Stone Ridge Drive deal that's going to drag it on forever. But I'm sorry, that's going to be the only item tonight. We will not waive the three-read rule. But it is up for second reading tonight. And that concludes my report.
Third reading should coincide with the public hearing. Yeah, second tonight, yes. Any other reports on outstanding assignments that's going on at the current time? Any updates? Okay. Not seeing any. We move on to our reports of our officials. Our mayor, Mr. Luke Feige.
Thanks, President Arnold. A quick comment on a couple of the items on the agenda tonight, particularly the two items extending seasonal employment. Item number two obviously has no additional appropriation. There's some good work that we can get done with those employees still, so also seek your favorable vote on that item tonight, as well as item seven. I think the new Utilities Director, Mr. Fisher, made a good judgment call with regard to getting that project done this season to a more efficient, updated technology. No sense of delaying another season, another six or nine months. So I'd ask for your favorable vote on those items. Couple comments on a variety of topics. Just wanted to touch on the, our decision to go ahead and pave Second Street. And just a quick recap, last summer, on the day of the eclipse, we had milled but not yet paved a portion of Second Street between Walnut and High Street, and we had quite a few residents of that street come out and say how much they liked seeing the brick there. So we made a judgment call that day to not put down the paving that was originally going to go down so we could evaluate the condition of that brick and make a decision about whether or not to stick with it or pave. So we took a year, Engineering Department did an analysis, and basically left it for my decision. We went ahead and decided to pave that street as originally intended. And we learned a couple of things in that process. First is that we didn't know when we started milling that there was going to be brick underneath. We didn't have something that said, hey, be careful, when you build this street, it might be brick. And so as we've gone into this season's paving, we are implementing a policy that allows us to be a little more cautious in a couple of areas, advise the contractor. But, and the Engineering Department, this report and several others, very thorough report, it gives recommendations or basically cost estimates for a variety of different things. What I'll say is that I was hoping it would be practical to remain brick. I live on a street that I think is brick underneath, and I'd love for it to be brick. But practicality of the situation and the current state of the street dictated that the practical solution was paving it right now. Paving is not a permanent solution, and so whoever is in government from seven to 10 years from now, when it's time to pave again, can think about whether or not, you know, it would be a wise long-term solution to have that streepy brick permanently. It wasn't something that we talked a lot about during our levy process. So we talked a lot about paving, we talked a lot about the repairs that were needed, but from where I sat at the time as auditor, I don't remember any conversations about repaving streets with brick. I was shocked at the ultimate cost to fully repave that street. The engineers estimate that it's somewhere around $850,000 to fully pave that street as if it were done the right way. But we have a historic downtown, and there's a certain ambiance, it's a brick. It actually serves many purposes, including traffic calming, which is slowing people down. And so I think that, you know, we have started something in the short term that will hopefully avoid future circumstances like this one. But if the city were to decide that it was a better thing to have brick streets downtown, I imagine we'll get that chance in seven to 10 years, and we can address it again at that time. And hopefully, somebody stands in front of that milling machine and says, wait, don't go too deep, it's brick. But since the milling's already happening, it's too late. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of that. You know, it's not that we decided to pave a street that was already brick to begin with. There's actually a city ordinance that is, that governs brick streets in the historic downtown area that says they cannot be paved if they're currently brick, right? So Fourth Street, adjacent to this building, where it's brick, will not be paved. So, anyway, just my comments on Second Street. We have started the budget process internally with department heads, and we'll be reaching out to external departments. I will be working with President Arnold and Finance Committee Chair, Councilman Kroll, to set up those meetings. For those who haven't been involved in that process before, I'm more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one to talk about the process. I'm sure the auditor would do the same, or in conjunction. We've done it, it seems, for the past five years, has been variances or variations in how we do it. But what we ask the department heads to do, and one of the most significant tasks, is look at their capital spending. You know, a lot of things, like you heard, you have on the agenda tonight, fuel costs by and large are dictated by the cost of fuel. Our mileage stays really surprisingly close from year to year. The trash routes don't change much from year to year. There's a variance every day, maybe even a mile or two, but there's a lot of fixed costs, but we are encouraging department heads to do long-term planning, capital planning, that sort of thing. So what we've done in the past, I think, is usually two departments per night in a series of consecutive weeks, and I think that seems to work well for most people. There's always requests, you know, the process always seems like it's hurried at the end. So if there are requests early on in the process about things we can do better, information we can provide differently, review opportunities, please feel free to mention those to any of us who sort out the meetings. The department heads know their budgets very well, and I think, I'd like to say that Crystal and I do as well, too, so please feel free to ask any of us those specific questions. Like I've mentioned before, though, just give me a heads up, because sometimes it does take a little bit of research, but we'll be getting going on those very soon. And then I'd like to do something I usually don't do in this manner, but I think maybe appropriate, maybe I'll do a little bit more of. I received and I forwarded circulated to most of you, or actually all of you, I think, a letter from the ACLU related to our codified ordinances and how they relate to panhandling, I don't remember the exact terminology. And what I would suggest is that, President Arnold, if you think it's appropriate, make the committee assignment request out of that letter.
I have mine, too. Yes. Okay, thank you.
And then I have a second committee assignment request I'd like to offer, and if it's appropriate, even request that it go to a specific committee. And that is, I'd like to get, and in conjunction with Dr. Kearney, we've talked about getting youth more involved in government process, and specifically council and how the operation of our government. And so I'd like to suggest a committee assignment for Community Affairs that is focused on creating some sort of youth council, youth city council, something along those lines, I'd be happy to work with. If it does grow to Community Affairs, I'd have Dr. Kearney on that formation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Feige. Our auditor, Ms. Crystal Spatina.
There's several things that I was going to report on tonight. Item number one on the agenda is for a resolution authorizing the tax levies, something that has to be done immediately. It has to be passed tonight, hopefully, because it's due on October 1st, so I ask for all your support for that. Item number five on the agenda is to appropriate money to the, to different departments to continue to pay for fuel. The city has a fuel farm down at the Transit Department, so all of our sleeping folks go down there to fuel up, and then it gets built out to each individual departments. So that is what that appropriation's for. I did a review, and as the mayor said, it's not the usage, it was the, it's not the mileage that they've used that was the big increase, it was the cost on average, you went up how fifty cents per gallon. So that was why there was such an increase for that. And then item, item number eight on the agenda is a request to appropriate additional funds to pay for the Sewer Department. This is also something that I hope that we can pass tonight so we can continue to pay for payroll, and the amount will be the remainder of the year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Spatina. Our all-director is not here this evening. I don't think I have anything to report on behalf of. Myself, I don't have a lot to say. We do have, we do have some temporary cameras in here tonight, which will become more permanent. I finally came up with, I think, a very expensive solution to having cameras for our home viewers. Hope this works okay. And please, home viewers, give me feedback, if you would. My city email is bruceArnold@chillicotheOH.gov. I'll repeat that, it's bruceArnold@chillicotheOH.gov. Please give me some feedback and let me know. I will make, I noticed while I was testing this today, that Spectrum, by going to their new boxes, has also changed the channel that they're on. So if you're sitting at home and you're on Spectrum and you don't have the new channel, you're probably not hearing me tell you this anyway. However, the channel, and I'll throw this out to our media people here, or other media people, maybe they can forward this, now on Spectrum is channel 1021 rather than what it used to be. So we're 1021 on Spectrum, and we're still at least channel two on Horizon. The mayor mentioned the information that we got from the ACLU. I do hand the note forward with that and that I was assigning to the, our Community Affairs. I think it's great to get young people involved in our government. And by saying that, you just put something in my head. I can remember in my term prior in council that we used to, after school, I back in, always invited the student council at school to come in and set in our meetings. I think we've always extended that invitation, they've always accepted. I will work on that. We've only done it in the past that I know of, the Chillicothe schools, but I'll also send it out to the other schools here in the county to come in and set in one of our meetings. And that's all I have to report. So, moving on, we have audience participation. We do have someone that has signed up to speak this evening. Anybody that's here this evening is more than welcome to speak. I will announce that we do have Council Rule 21, limits each speaker to five minutes. If there's multiple speakers, you have a total of 15 minutes per subject. When you get close to your five minutes, I'll kind of wave at you to tell you that you have a minute left. But anybody that wishes to speak is maybe welcome, too. This evening, we have Beverly Miles that we'd like to speak to us. If you would, please come up to the microphone.
I've got handouts.
Sure, help yourself.
I assume I'm supposed to stand here?
Yeah, that's okay. And I won't start your time until you get done with them all, okay?
Yeah, because I whittled it down to as little as I could possibly, but it still included the vital information. I got it down to 11 minutes and 40 seconds. So is anybody else here going to speak about smart meters?
You still have, you've got five minutes yourself.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Then you guys are going to have to read these if you want to learn anything about it. I'll come here. I misunderstood you on the phone. I thought that I could have 15 minutes if nobody else was.
Five minutes per individual.
Okay. Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hello to the council. I don't know proper protocols, so I hope that's adequate. I do have a very loud voice. Used to be a cheerleader at Smith Junior High School, so if it's too loud for a microphone, tell me. Asbestos, phthalate, cigarettes, DDT, glyphosate, oxycodone. These are substances the US government deemed safe and will release on the public. You may not know all those, but the outcomes were horrible. My name is Beverly Miles. I was raised in Chillicothe and returned in 2015. I've worked as a registered nurse for over 44 years in all the areas of nursing. I am chronically ill and disabled, so I know how devastating it is to lose your health. I found out about AEP's plan to deploy smart meters in Chillicothe by accident. I was not informed by a letter or a call from AEP staff to schedule an appointment. The standard procedure on the part of utility companies across the nation has been to trespass and change out the meters. They have easement to read meters only. Why the stealth on the part of the utility companies? In medicine, informed consent is a requirement before any procedure is completed that has risk. 10 percent of the population, that's one out of 10 people, are sensitive to electromagnetic frequencies, or another word is electromagnetic radiation. They get sick and lose quality life as a result of this technology being forced upon us. Everyone else will be affected eventually. Don't the utility companies have a responsibility to obtain informed consent when planning to install a potentially dangerous meter? Citizens all over the world are concerned about the dangers of smart meters and EMF, EMR pollution that pose health risks to all humans, animals, and plant life. Many instances of corporate and law enforcement violations of citizens' rights have been reported, including arrests, vandalism, breaking and entering, and turning off power completely, even if the citizen's life may be put in jeopardy. One must ask oneself, why are the utility giants willing to go to such extreme lengths to force this technology on the public? Is it purely motivation for secondary gain, which is just greed, or is it something more nefarious? What is a smart meter? Smart meters are computerized electric meters that transmit electricity and gas usage to the utility using radio frequency communication. These are the same waves that cell phones emit, but smart meters broadcast 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at a power density 100 to 160 times that of a cell phone. Many countries' governing agencies, such as the FCC in the United States, continue to base their radio frequency safety standards exclusively on thermal effects or exposure levels which increase the temperature of tissue by a certain number of degrees. So your body tissue would need to begin to actually cook in order So your body tissue would need to begin to actually cook in order for it to be considered an unsafe level. This means that thousands of studies that show biological harm from RF radiation are not even considered by the government agencies that are supposed to ensure safety. Dr. McCullough, a naturopath, made a statement. He said, "Many still do not realize that they're chronically exposed to something that can deteriorate their health, and unless it's identified and remediated, can lead to premature death, an exposure that is completely invisible, tasteless, and odorless." That exposure is exposure to electromagnetic fields. Utility companies will tell you their smart meters transmit only six times or so a day. In your handout, there's a graph that shows how many actual transmissions occur. The truth is, smart meters transmit pulses of wireless radiation between nine thousand six hundred and a hundred and ninety thousand times a day. That's seven days a week. Smart meters are repeatedly catching fire. The electric company usually attributes the fires to something else. Incidents have been reported that the utility company sends an employee to get the meter after the fire before the fire marshal has a chance to do the investigation. Some fires have originated in the meter socket and may be a direct consequence of the practice of hot swapping. That's when you take out the meter without even turning off the electricity. We also hear a fire starting somewhere in a house remote from the meter socket, and we hear refrigerator motors, computers, and high-end sound systems burning out right after an install. Apparently, the poor power quality, dirty electricity, may cause some of these events. There are also design flaws in the meters themselves. An important one is that they have lithium batteries to hold data when the power goes out. Lithium batteries explode when heated. They are encased in combustible plastic and placed on homes sitting in the hot summer sun. Not a good combination. But the sun is not the only thing that will heat the meters. Power surges and other incidents could and will. In my research, many states, many state that these meters aren't grounded, nor do they have surge suppressors. That makes everyone vulnerable. Is that it?
Well, you're past time, but I'll give you a minute to wrap up.
Okay.
Something to summarize.
There's also concerns of violation of our privacy rights, the constitutional privacy rights. Puco, I emailed them, and they say that they are working on safeguards to prevent selling our information, you know, what appliance we use, when we use them, whether we're home, and things like that. They're going to have to prove it to me because I don't trust them, period. And the cost, smart meters have to be replaced every five to seven years.
President, yes. Not to interrupt, but it would serve counsel to make a motion to allow her to give you some more time to speak.
We're fine if you'd like to, you know, move on.
Do you second?
Thank you.
Quick roll call.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, how will smart meters save consumer money or decrease energy usage? Because that's the claim, right? So help me God. These meters run on electricity, unlike the current electromechanical meters, which don't require electricity to run. So we're using more electricity. Smart meters have to be replaced every five to seven years, unlike the current electromechanical meters that last thirty to eighty years, some of them last. These just claims of cost savings don't add up. I'd have to trench the numbers in on the unaccounting. We've already invested eleven billion dollars in this smart grid program, and that's taxpayer-funded. So the utility companies, to recoup some of that grant money, have to install smart meters on homes. And I think that's some of the motivation, why they're pushing this so hard. The smart meters are made in China. Yes, jobs were created in China, but in the U.S., thousands of jobs were lost because of the elimination of meter readers. Utility companies also claim that analog, the electromechanical meters, can't be purchased anymore, and that's not true. I could order one tomorrow on the Internet. Michigan has introduced House Bill 4220 that would allow citizens to have their choice of three meters. There's the smart meter, and then if you opt out at the fees that they require and sign, releasing them from all accountability for any damages, illnesses, fire in the house burnt down or anything, or the old electromechanical meters, which is what I prefer to keep. So Michigan's trying to pass a bill right now to give consumers the choice between the three meters. There's a lot of things on the Internet if you want to research what they're doing, but there are leaps ahead of us. Many Michigan cities and counties have passed resolutions against smart meters. In fact, every municipality that has been approached has passed a resolution. I don't need to explain to you guys why resolutions are important. You guys do those. But I would really love to see council consider a moratorium on further deployment of the smart meters by AEP until the council can do more research and maybe have some expert testimony and meeting for dedicated smart meters, just for public comment. I think this is very, very important because once they're on, they're almost impossible to get off. Technology has advanced by leaps and bounds in all areas, and some of these advancements are frightening. Just because we can doesn't mean we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Miss Miles. Very interesting information. Very interesting.
Once I started researching, I was just blown away.
Appreciate you coming on sharing that.
Well, thanks for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to say this evening and bring forth? Not seeing any. We want all business. Anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? We'll move on then to petition some correspondence received by the clerk.
Mr. President, I have no petitions or correspondence. However, I have had the public hearing scheduled through another publication with the Chillicothe Zed, and it will be, as I indicated at the last meeting, on October 22nd, 7:30 p.m. Proper time added. Time of that. Is everything cop setting?
Any other new business that anybody would like to bring up? Yes, Mr. Crowe?
I would just like to say thanks to the VA and all the folks that worked to bring the traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall to Chillicothe and also the Traveling Museum. If any of you got a chance to see that over the weekend, that was really something else. I took my daughters both out there, and they were really impressed to see the wall. And of course, we have a personal connection. My great uncle was killed in Vietnam, so we looked up his name. But also the museum that they brought in, it was a traveling museum, and they set it up in their gymnasium area and showed what life was like for soldiers, not only in Vietnam, but in World War II in Korea. And that was a really nice event to educate people and also kind of, you know, bring to mind the sacrifice that our veterans make. So it was a nice event. So I just want to say thanks to all those that were involved with that program.
That's very nice. Thanks. Any other new business from anybody? Not seeing any. Move on to committee assignments and meeting dates. We've had four committee assignments that have come out since our last meeting. To transit, legislation to authorize the mayor to apply for ODOT grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration for funds for the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and accepting grants from ODOT. Utilities, a request for legislation to appropriate monies for various accounts to make payroll, fringe, and pension for the remainder of the year for water and sewer. That's on tonight's agenda. Transit, a request to approve a new operations manager's position. And also, backup to that is request to appropriate the monies to fund that position. And that is the assignments that were discussed prior to the meeting and that Mrs. Patrick mentioned before that are headed to the law director. And that's all we've had. Does anybody have any meetings, committee meetings, or anything they'd like to announce? I don't have anything at this time. Other than the public hearing that Mr. Fawcett has announced. With that being said, then, we move on to our legislation. So, Mr. Fawcett, are you ready? Item number one.
Second reading of an ordinance approving the action of the planning commission of the City of Chillicothe in rezoning two properties involved in a land swamp and located at Stone Ridge Drive at Stone Ridge Court, Chillicothe, Ohio. Second reading.
Let me forward. Item number two.
First reading of an ordinance extending the temporary employment of one seasonal employee within administration, four seasonal employees within the Service Department, one seasonal employee within the Engineering Department, and four seasonal employees within the Parks and Recreation Department and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Fairchild?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
A motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has been approved. Roll call on the legislation.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has been approved. Roll call on the legislation.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating sixty-four hundred fifteen dollars for email hosting service expenses for various city departments and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Crowe?
At this time, I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
Motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Ms. Kearney. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating two hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for additional fuel costs within various departments and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Crowe?
I would ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe to file an application proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws, for funds from the Ohio Re-Rule Transportation Grant Program, accepting such grant and executing a contract with ODOT upon grant proposal acceptance and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Patrick.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance extending the temporary employment of two seasonal employees within the Utilities Department and declaring emergency. First reading.
Yes, Ms. Patrick.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed.
Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating funds in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred five dollars, fifty-two cents for the purpose of making payroll, fringe, and pension for the remainder of 2018 within the Water and Sewer Department and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Patrick.
I'd like to again waive, make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And last, number nine.
First reading of an ordinance to approve amended replacement pages to the Chillicothe codified ordinances and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Crowe?
At this time, I would like to ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
And seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on that motion.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Unless anybody has anything to add, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting by closing? Floryman, seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Tattman.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Floryman.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Everybody can wait except Mr. Tattman. He seemed like he kind of wanted to start.
He can turn the lights on.
Everybody has.
Everybody has.